We have about one minute to go before six o'clock. And in respect to those folks that might be watching on Facebook or YouTube, we try to start by the correct time. Our clock up here is a little bit fast, so we'll start sharply at six o'clock tonight. Thank you for being. All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. We officially call our meeting to order and welcome each one of you here tonight for the conducting of business for Randolph County. We've got some, not so many numbers on our agenda, but some pretty significant presentations on our agenda tonight for issues that the county will be dealing with as we go forward. And we welcome each one of you here for our agenda and for, again, the conducting of business and welcome. I hope you had a safe travel here and had a safe day today. It's been a little cold and slushy ice at some places, but trust that you made it here and be able to make it back home safely. So with that, again, we welcome you. We will ask Chaplain Reverend Mike May of the Randolph County Sheriff's Department if he will come for our invocation, and then we'll have our pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Thank you, Chairman Fry. It's an honor to serve and stand with you as a chaplain of Randolph County. Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we take an opportunity to thank you for the privilege we have to pray to you in all of our Randolph County Commissioners' meetings. We're also humbled and grateful for the sacrificial serving and to all of the Commissioners' families and sharing time with us on our behalf. Next to the word of God, we read, "I exhort therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings, and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty, for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior." Second Timothy 1. We're also grateful for recent county decisions of more character and godly standards concerning constitutional freedoms of the unborn and the right to bear arms. We ask that you continue to give divine wisdom to all of our Randolph County government officials concerning the best interests for the citizens of our county. We also ask you, God, that Randolph County would be an example in standing up for what is right in your sight to neighboring counties and states all across this great nation of ours. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. We don't have any other special recognitions tonight, so we will have our public comment period. I'll ask Mr. Morgan, our attorney, to read the rules of our engagement tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our rules of procedure for the public comment period are as follows. The public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally and in writing before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Bob Morrison.
I will say, as Bob's coming forward, we do want to hold to our time limits tonight. I think a lot of this is repetitious, and we do have a lengthy agenda, so please observe our times. Bob?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Getting right to the point, I'm here tonight to urge you to remove the statue of an armed Confederate soldier whose presence speaks a threat and an insult to the citizens who attend your meetings. The inscription calls it a monument to our Confederate heroes. The threat was written in the Constitution of his nation, the Confederate States of America. It guaranteed the right of white citizens to own black slaves. That cause is not one that we should honor today. I do not ask you to change history. I ask you to change which parts of our history receive public honor. Suppose for a moment that the Confederacy had won the war. Slavery, the ownership of humans as a means of economic production, like farm equipment and factory equipment, would be legal. Our border with Tennessee would be a national border separating the Confederacy from the Union. The Union was preserved, but the greed of the slave owners lived on through convict labor leases, sharecropping, voter suppression, raids on black communities by red shirts, the Klan, and even law enforcement. By 1911, when our statue was erected, all of those practices were enshrined in law. Black residents were citizens in name only, deprived of the rights enjoyed by whites. That Confederate legacy doesn't deserve a place of honor in 21st century America to whose flag we pledged allegiance. That nation has been built by brown, black, white, yellow, and red people, all of us citizens deserving the same rights and respect. Free people have a right, of course, to display Confederate symbols, but we expect better of our government.
Mr. Morrison, one minute.
It was a better experience for me to see the nation's capital invaded by a mob intent on overthrowing our elected government. Many of those insurrectionists still honor Confederate symbols as inspirational tools, and our statue is one of those symbols. You Commissioners, you're smart people. You know these things. You've put this issue off for a long time while moving quickly on other citizens' requests, so I remind you that choosing to not act is a decision. It's easy for a while, but your conscience knows that in this case, the easy thing is not the right thing to do. I hope you'll decide to promptly remove this statue. The details of exactly how, when, cost, and so forth can be determined after the decision to remove it.
Mr. Morrison, that's your time.
Now is the time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Virginia Wall.
Thank you. My name is Virginia Wall. I've been a resident of Ashboro since 1987. Last meeting, the man in the Confederate costume stood up and told us that the Confederate States of America was never abolished. I was aghast. Unfortunately, racism still does exist. The Confederate traitors were fighting to keep the institutions of slavery alive. Slavery was and still is morally wrong. Documented truth, most Randolph County residents at the time of the Civil War did not want to fight for the Confederacy and held belief that holding people of color in slavery was morally wrong. I do not know why these values have changed, and I don't know why some current citizens think differently, but I'm here today to say that I don't think that's right. We should not have a symbol like the Confederate statue sitting on the front lawn of our government dedicated to a group of traitors who fought against our legal government in hopes of keeping people in bondage just because of the color of their skin. You've told us to, as elected officials, you don't have the authority to move the statue. I get that. But as our elected leaders, you do have the authority and the duty to act as our moral compass. Be brave and do what's right. Send the clear message that this is not the idea, the racist idea, we want to send out to the world. Start the process. Send a letter, whatever it takes, to begin the discussion, to resolve this issue. It needs to be addressed. You vow to protect. You vow to serve, and I get that you do that. But it appears to me you're only doing that, in this case, for your own racial identity. Decisions you have made lately for the change this country is going to, this county is going to change irrevocably. Those simple country folks who don't appear to endorse or to like change and who voted you in eventually will be replaced by a much more diverse citizenry driven by that economic growth that you know is coming. Will you be on the right side of history and learn from mistakes made in the past? Move the statue.
Dwayne Roberts.
Good evening. Dwayne Roberts, Commander of Sons, Confederate Veterans, Randolph County. I have a resolution from the North Carolina Division, Sons of Confederate Veterans. Whereas the county respects the veterans of this county, and whereas the county wishes to respect all county citizens, past and present, whereas the county stands against all forms of racism, and whereas concerning the county's stand against racism, the county will not bow to pressures from black supremacists, white supremacists, or any other racist groups, and the county agrees to continually honor veterans, especially those veterans that have sacrificed their lives in defense of their friends and neighbors. The county resolves to maintain the county's veterans' memorials, memorials, in perpetuity, not only because it is state law we've sworn to uphold, but because it is the right thing to do for those veterans and those citizens of this county. God, our vindicator. Chief of Staff, North Carolina Division, Sons of Confederate Veterans, Matthew A. McCollum. What are we waiting on? This has been drug out six months now, right?
Yes, sir.
What are we waiting on? No history has changed. You've already voted to keep it one time. Let's keep it again. Let's get on with it. We're to the point now where wasting county taxpayer money. And the pledge of allegiance to the flag was brought up a few minutes ago. You need to remember that when we do the pledge of allegiance to that striped banner, that's the one that brought the slaves here. That flag that's etched on the side of the memorial did not bring one single slave over here. I'm going to repeat that. That flag that's etched on the side of that memorial outside this courthouse did not bring one single slave here. One last thought for you to remember.
Mr. Roberts, you have one minute.
Thank you. Alamance County kept their memorial. Montgomery County kept their memorial. I don't see why we should be any different. Thank you.
Kevin Price.
Mr. Chairman, and each and every one of you, I was here on last month when nobody else showed up but me and this gentleman right here. First of all, he went to the Bible and took something totally out of context. When we talk about separation, they were talking about separation of land. You know how you steal some land from your neighbors, have this stake moved over here and moved over here? That's what they were talking about. But we don't do that. And when you come to the pledge of allegiance, we get down to that part that says, "With liberty and justice for all." If you're going to change something, change the end of that that says liberty and justice for white people, because they're the only ones getting justice in this county. When you all were elected again, you were elected to serve the whole Randolph County, not a part of it, not a piece of it, but the whole Randolph County. That statue should have never been put out there from Jump Street, but it's there. And he's talking about, "Why don't we get on with it? Leave it, leave it, leave it." Why don't we take it and put it in his yard? He's the one that wants it so bad. And it's like the most of you, you know, I seen you smiling at him, you waving, and that's all right. I don't have no problem with who your friends are, but realize Randolph County is made up of six or seven different nationality of people. I know because I worked with the most of them. But I'm telling you, this thing is offensive. It's racist. You honor a man that was not only racist, he was a liar, and he was a traitor to his country. But yet, you look up to this man. We have brought you things and things on top of things that showed you that this thing was wrong. Have you looked at it? None of you have looked at it. No, we're going to keep on listening to so-and-so. Y'all need to look at it. You need to see what it's all about, because like I said before, you don't want to see your daughters and your kids sold to me. You don't want your daughters and kids sold to somebody like me. But the thing that's really important is God sees everything that you say and everything that you do. And as the man said last month, there's a special place in hell for people like that. And you know what? If I get to hell, I hope it's not with a person like him. But I'm praying that you all would do what's right. And I don't think you're doing what's right. I think you're doing what makes some of the people happy that are voting for you. But I want you to know, I don't care what it takes. If I have to move into the city of Ashboro so that my vote will count, gentlemen, some of you will be getting off of this board, because I think it's time for y'all to do something that is going to suit everybody and not just one race of people here in Randolph County. Thank you.
Clyde Faust.
Good afternoon, neighbors, and I'm going to get done in three minutes. I know I am, but if I don't, I apologize. But I do want to say this. I want us to take a moment, and I want us to breathe. I want us to take a moment to breathe. I understand that people are passionate. I do. But I want us to take a moment and breathe. And the reason I want us to take a moment and breathe is because this is Randolph County. This is still, I believe, a place where we can talk to each other and we can find a resolution and we can work things out. And so I want us to take a moment, and I want us to breathe, because I want us to do what is best for this county as a group of people. I'm going to ask anybody in the room that believes that that monument should not be in front of this courthouse to please stand, if you believe it shouldn't be there. And I'm asking them to stand for this reason. Antifa is not in that crowd. Communism is not in that crowd. We work with you. We go to church with you. We eat at the same restaurants. We are, this is Randolph County. This is not some outside group that is asking for this monument to be moved, not destroyed, not thrown in a garbage can, simply moved out from in front of our place of government. When I come to see my county commissioners, I should not have to see a relic to honor people who killed Americans in order to enslave others. Now, the young man that spoke earlier talked about that it was the American flag that brought slaves over. And you know, that's the beautiful part about America? Because he's right. But it was America that was deciding that slavery was wrong and that was deciding that we are going to abolish slavery and we're going to move away from slavery. And when America did that, it was the Confederates that decided that they were going to shoot Americans rather than join into that family that said slavery was wrong. And that's not me that said that. Look at the Confederate Constitution. The Confederate Constitution does not change the way Americans taxed Confederates. Taxation wasn't changed. State's rights were not changed. You know what was changed between the Confederate Constitution and the American Constitution? The Confederate Constitution put in writing that they would always have the right to own Negro slaves. There is no reason for a monument to that to stand in front of this building.
Mr. Faust.
Thank you.
Thirty seconds. Thank you. We are going to deal with this issue, and we are going to have a vote by this board as it applies to that statue out in front of where we're gathered. That's going to happen. All right. I do want to mention Representative Allen McNeil is here tonight, his wife, Pat. Glad you all could join us. And Kelly Heath from RCC is a new member of the Ashboro City School Board and City Council. I'm sorry, yes. Glad to have you with us. And I think I saw Dr. Woody come in, did I? Yes. So thank you all for joining us tonight. So with that, next item is our consent agenda. Is there any item here that you would like to be brought and voted on separately, or will have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those no, they are approved. New business, Voluntary Ag District Annual Report. Kenny Sharon's here tonight. We're looking forward to it.
Good evening. How are you doing today? Glad to be here. Have a brief report from the Voluntary Ag District program. We added about just over 100 acres to that program this year, down a little bit, I think, from past years, but there's already some applications coming in to the next year. So that program helps us to advance the cause of agriculture in Randolph County and to help landowners recognize, be recognized as farm owners and agricultural land and products being produced on that land. Additionally, just a brief update on some of the extension activities in agriculture in Randolph County in general. The pandemic took a lot of things out of play, but the Lord's hit the rain this year in good times. So we had great crops. Corn, soybeans were great producers this year, so probably close to record-breaking yields this year. Heard a lot of farmers say their crops did very well. We're still working on farmers' markets and food, local food systems here, and a lot of work being done there. Also, VAD Board wishes to thank the Commissioners for the support of the Ag Center, Farm, Food, Family Education Center coming up. As you know, they put a lot of work, blood, sweat, and tears into that project over the years, and we appreciate the support coming forward here. Also, you'll see a part of the consent agenda. I know it's already been voted on. We appreciate the board members agreeing to serve again, those folks, Clifford, Lisa, and Bill. We are working on another member. We have someone identified. We'll have to get them to do the application process and fill out that form there, but we should have a person to replace, Levert Strider, coming up next meeting. We appreciate Levert's service so many years on the Voluntary Ag District Board. This is all I got for you. Let's see if you have some questions.
Anybody have a question?
Mr. Chairman, just for folks that may not be familiar with the Voluntary Ag District program, it's beneficial to not only the public but to farmers as well. And some of the public benefits are that it preserves open space in the county and it also provides an economic diversity in the county, along with increasing the opportunity to produce locally grown agricultural commodities. And that's part of the Ag Center we'll be talking about shortly. But also, it's farmer benefits, which informs new landowners of a farm's presence that may have a potential of dust and noise and smells that's often associated with the agricultural industry, and that could possibly reduce conflicts when people are buying that land. And that's recognized by signage that you often see on the roads as you're going through the countryside, the Voluntary Ag District signs. And it also requires that the land, farmland, be used as a last resort if it's considered for a public project that may involve condemnation of the land, along with that land that's enrolled in the program, will not be assessed any fees if it's water and sewer that come out. So that's some of the benefits of the program. And I appreciate what the Voluntary Ag District Board, I think.
Kip Davis is here. He's back here. Appreciate him coming in.
He's the chairman of the board and keeps everybody in line.
He does.
Appreciate the work.
Yeah. And to say, anyone in the audience or any watching from home, if you have some open land and farmland, we invite you to apply to be part of the Voluntary Ag District. So it's a great program. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. What year did we start? So we've got 26,049 acres in the plan, in the program.
I'd have to go back and look at the, okay, 2000.
Twenty years.
Right, right.
Well, 2007.
2007?
Yeah. February 2007.
All right.
All right.
Fifteen years.
Right. And Madam Clerk, if you could correct my typo on that, it's 2022, not 2021. When I wrote this, we'd only been writing '22 just a few weeks, so I apologize for that mistake. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. And the board members that are here, thank you.
Yes.
For the work you do to represent the agricultural community in our county, it's still business number one.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Our next two items Will's going to present, and both of these have to do with agriculture. And we sort of, with issues related to our hospital and all the things related to COVID and the pandemic and all that, we sort of put the Ag Center on the back burner a couple years ago, and we've got our hospital still open and still dealing with COVID and the pandemic, but maybe not to the extreme that we did. But the Ag Center has sort of resurrected itself. Representative McNeil, who's here tonight, has been a big part of helping get this thing revitalized and for running this through the General Assembly, getting the money that Will's fixing to tell us about, set aside for us. And we commend you, Allen, for your efforts and recognition at the bulk of this county and your service. And I know you're not running for reelection, and we thank you so much for your service over the years. I knew you'd win. Drive to the Sheriff's Department from seven o'clock at night till seven in the morning and been a big part of this county and helped us to live a safer life. Thank you for it. So, Will, you have B and C.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you well know, the state passed its budget last fall and had quite a few items in there to support community projects. For Randolph County, there was two projects that I'm going to bring up tonight. These were what the state calls directed grants, the state infrastructure fund, and being processed through the Office of Management and Budget. There's contract requirements to get the money. There is reporting requirements, as you can imagine, audit requirements. But the first step is to accept the grant and get the paperwork done. There's two grants. Representative McNeil helped get the $16 million for the Farm, Food, and Family Education Center. And the second one is an undesigned capital needs of $400,000. Chairman Fry and Commissioner McDowell had suggested that maybe the board would want to consider just putting the extra $400,000 in with the 16 to seed that project. We haven't determined the scope of that project yet, but it's expected to be more than what the 16 million is, and so that'd be for the board to consider.
And that money was really sent here by Senator Dave Craven and some of his allotted funds that he sent, and it says undesigned, but Max and I happened to be there when we're talking about this, and it felt to be a good thing just to put the $400,000 in there. We can cover some of our professional services, which we're fixing to talk about, that'll cover that contract. So that's the item before us right now, is the budget amendment to receive the $16,400,000. Any other questions for Will? Any other questions for Will? You want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we, one, accept the grants, authorize the chairman to sign the grant contracts and approve the associated budget amendment in the amount of $16,400,000 to the Agricultural Center Capital Project Fund.
All right, I have a second to the motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Further discussion, questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it is approved. Thank you again, Alan. Okay, next item, Will.
Kenny Sharon has had an initial meeting with some of the folks that are going to be participating with the Farm Food and Family Education Center, determining the scope of the project, helping with some of the details of that. The first step, I think, that the board would want to take is to go ahead and retain an architectural firm to help guide that conversation. We used in the initial project, which was much larger than this one is going to be, HH Architecture. And they have quite a bit of knowledge of the site and of our needs and the lay of the land and how that project can move forward, I think effectively have a lot of data. So they have proposed a contract for $85,900, which would consist of the following services. Analyze the proposed site to determine the physical characteristics. As I said, the first project was a lot larger. If you're taking the hotel and the event center out, then it gives us a lot more room to put what we do want on the site. They will conduct up to four meetings, develop a master site plan, create a final master plan and a rough estimate of what the potential costs are. So that would give the board information as far as what the scope of this project will end up being and what the future cost might be.
H and H is, that's who was working with us before, right?
Yeah.
When we first started this venture, I guess there are four years ago now.
A lot of the information they gathered can be utilized. I know we met with Kenny's, Kenny Sharon's group, Representative McNeil was there. And there are several parts of what they've already done that can be utilized. One of the things that the biggest constraints that we had previously was that it needed to be one flat pad in the front because of the Ag Center and you want to keep everything on the same level. But they feel like that this can be better utilized, the land can be better utilized. It wouldn't have to all be different, all the same levels. The agricultural extension offices, soil and water offices could be used. Basically, those already been determined. So there's a lot within what they have already done that can be utilized. And they also have much of the knowledge of the site. And so utilizing them going forward probably be better than, you know, starting from scratch with another architect because they do have that familiarity and have all the information and can kind of pick up, but with a little bit of a different direction.
Very good. Any other questions? Have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the contract HH Architecture to authorize the county manager to sign the contract.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved. Thank you. Okay, our Child Fatality Prevention Community Child Protection Team Annual Report, Tracy and Tara are going to do this. It's one of those things that we don't talk about a lot and it's, for me, it's always something sad that we have to review. But I know you, department heads, deal with it every day in your jobs. Thank you for it.
Good evening, everybody. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-576.1A2, I'm here this evening to review the Child Fatality Prevention Team 2021 Annual Report for calendar year 2020 Child Fatalities for Randolph County. That gets a little tricky. Just to quickly explain that, last year in 2021, we looked at child fatalities in the year of 2020. So we're always a year behind. Just as a quick reminder, every North Carolina county has a Child Fatality Prevention Team that is composed of representatives from public agencies and non-public agencies that serve families and children in the community. And there's other individuals as well that represent the community. If you look at the report itself on the backside, you'll see a list of the team members and you'll just see the diverse backgrounds that are represented on the team. Again, the team meets to review the deaths of children ages zero to 18. Those children reside here in Randolph County to identify any potential gaps or system problems that may have contributed in any way to the delay or lack of services that might have prevented the death. If the team identifies any gaps, the team makes efforts to improve or add services that will prevent problems for families in the future. In 2021, we met virtually three times. Excuse me, in December, we received notification from the state that our, the deaths we were to review for the third quarter were delayed. So we looked at those in January of this year.
So they're not included in these numbers?
They are.
They are?
Yeah, we had them in time to get them into the report. So in calendar year 2020, there were 23 child deaths. That's two fewer than the previous year, but that's still a lot. The causes of death included, there were three accidents. And accidents could include, I'm not saying this is what these children died from, but they could include motor vehicle accidents and unspecified threat to breathing like asphyxiation or, you know, choking or aspirating on food, drowning, near drowning, something like that. There were two births, two deaths from birth defects, congenital birth defects. And that's usually something that happens, you know, it's an uncontrolled condition that happens before birth. It could be something like spinal bifida or conjoined twins, something like that. Five deaths from illness, you know, that could have been a viral infection, cancer. We've not had any, but had we had any COVID deaths zero to 18, they would have been listed here, but thankfully we've not had any in that age group. There were six deaths from perinatal conditions. That could be something like a baby that's born really premature or a child that's born with like a cardiac condition or defect. There were four deaths that are categorized as other. And those other are, it's really hard for the medical examiner to determine a cause of death. So it's, there's no specific cause sometimes. If, I don't think we had any unsafe sleep deaths, but if there were unsafe sleep deaths, they would fall under other. And then unfortunately, we had three suicides in children zero to 18 in 2020. And that's the most that we've had in the last five years. Upon review of these cases of these 23 deaths, the team did not identify any gaps. But to stay well informed and to learn more about prevention strategies, the team did request and received education on safe sleep and car seat safety. And with there being, having been three child fatalities related to suicide, the team has set a goal for this coming year to get education on suicide prevention in children, adolescents and teens. On a final note, I did want to point out, and it's in the report, while we didn't have any unsafe sleep deaths, we still continue to provide education in partnership with Randolph County Partnership for Children. We continue to provide safe sleep resources to new parents. That's all that I have and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I know real big questions, but it concerns me here. I see three deaths out of 23. Math tells me it's about 15%. Is there anything that either one of you could contribute that to?
Are you talking about the suicides?
Yes.
We didn't, in reviewing those, I don't remember anything in particular coming up that led us to believe that they were attributed to anything, any one thing in particular.
I was thinking just the general.
So some of the general consensus and data point to suicides for youth have been up, not just in North Carolina, but youth suicides have been up. We don't know why. We've got some crises going on all at one time. We've got COVID, we still have the opioid addiction, and then we had schools closed and children were home. So we can make some educated guesses, but we don't have firm data to say what the cause of the increased suicides were. But they are up, not just here, but in North Carolina.
That goes back to mental health, too.
It does.
We experienced it in my family, suicide.
Reason I was asked that, Mr. Chairman, was the fact that, you know, you've got the opioid situation that still exists, quite obviously. I just wonder if the COVID issue, kids not being in school, out of school, not having a normal, what you'd call a normal life cycle, if that attributes to anything. But what you're saying is we really don't know.
We don't have data to support that. We can make an educated guess.
Right.
It's a pretty good educated guess, yeah. I just wondered, three out of 23, to me, that sounds like a lot. I know it's three, but that's a lot.
Well, it's zero to 18. And when I saw it's child, and I don't think of child going from to 18, you know, that.
Yeah.
So when I saw suicides at three, and I was thinking children, and that was one of the questions I had that you answered, was this is zero to 18. So, you know, you hate to see it, but youth, ten, you know, I could, that's a number that I would be more, I would expect to see more not children. So I don't know if these are children or if these are youth or how that works. But it's a high number either way, especially if these were less than 12 years old, elementary school, that kind of thing. Hopefully they're not, but it's bad at any rate.
I can tell you, we have had some heartbreaking cases that have been young children committing suicide in our county that we've been involved in. We don't know the causes, but are you going to ask another question? Because that's going to segue right into my report.
No. If I can set you up, I'll be glad to set you up.
You did, you did.
I do have one more question. If the person's address was not in Randolph County, but they were living and committed suicide in Randolph County, whose number did they go in?
So I want to make sure I understand your question. If the person was not living in Randolph County.
He was staying in Randolph County. He was, he has a High Point, had a High Point address.
Is it a child?
Seventeen years old.
And it would depend on where the parents are also? If it happened here and the family's address is in High Point and that High Point address is in Guilford County, it would be Guilford County. But if the family's address was in High Point and it was a Randolph County address, it would be our case.
It would have been a High Point address.
Okay.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. Does any, do any of these categories cover opioid overdose death? Or is there any of those in this category under 18? Or is that in one of these categories?
So let me make sure I understand your question. For the deaths that Tara reported, are any of those cases reporting opioid overdose deaths?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know the answer to that.
Those would most likely be categorized under either illnesses or other. We pull these categorizations right off of the documentation that comes from the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner. They put a cause, either an accident, a birth effect, an illness, perinatal condition, other suicide, and then they'll give a specific, it'll kind of spell out. So we didn't have any of those, I can say that. But I would, my guess would be that it would be under illness or other, unless it was an intentional overdose for opioid, and then it would be a suicide.
Thank you.
It goes without saying that 2021 was a tough year for families and for children in our community, not just with Randolph County, but all across North Carolina. We talked earlier about the effects of COVID and the ongoing numbers of opioid deaths that affect families and that affect children created a systemic syndemic of deadly crises that families and children were dealing with. And our numbers show that. The Community Child Protection Team Report is what I'm going to be talking about just very briefly. Tara's subject matter was very sobering. It talked about deaths of children. The team, the Community Child Protection Team Report is in front of you. And the same team that comprises the Child Fatality Team also helps us with the Child Protection Team. So they wear two hats. They review child deaths in the community, but they also review information from the Department of Social Services for cases that we are reviewing and that we're involved with. And if you look at your report, you see some of the areas of concern, how these families came to be involved with Randolph County Department of Social Services. The top three are substance abuse, adult and adolescent mental health issues and injurious environment. For the 10 cases that we reviewed, if you look at these numbers, there's 19 reasons. So most cases come to our notice, not just with one reason, but many reasons. The Community Child Protection Team also assisted with two state child fatality reviews this year. And those are children that died while Randolph County Department of Social Services had some, we had some contact with that family. And that contact could be a child passed away and there was a report to Randolph County Department of Social Services and we became involved that way in the home. Or it could be a child passed away through a motor vehicle accident and there were other children in the home. So those are just two samples of how Randolph County Department of Social Services can be involved in fatalities. But there were two cases reviewed this year from the State Fatality Team. The same team members that comprise the fatality team that Tara talked about assist us with helping to protect children. One of the other things that has contributed to what is going on in our community is federal legislation that was passed around 2017, 18 called CAFTA, Child Abuse Prevention Act. And that act is, has made a real new population of referrals for Department of Social Services. It requires hospitals and other health providers to report to Department of Social Services when there are children, infants who are born that are substance affected. So that creates a whole new, a whole new class of referrals to Randolph County Department of Social Services. These children called substance affected infants, more than likely have never gone home. But they and/or their mother have been born with substances in their system. And this is a very, very vulnerable population that requires our most fervent advocacy to keep these children alive. And one of the things that has happened is that it's increased the number of CPS reports that we've had, it's increased the number of substance affected infants who have come into foster care. And it's also increased the amount of work that we have to do with families that are dealing with substance. And usually it's not just one of the areas, it's some of the areas that we talked about. It's not just substance abuse, but it could be substance abuse and either mental health of the adult and/or children or any of these other areas that are in your report. And Ms. Akers mentioned safe sleeping. That has been a longstanding challenge. That has been a longstanding challenge that we have all worked in the community to improve. Parents who co-sleep with children, and the number of children who have died in the past from this, has made it an issue that we all pay attention to. So some of the things that we've done are taken the action steps. It's training, training, and more training. We reach out to all of our community partners, not just public health, but all of our other human services agencies, law enforcement, the Children's Advocacy Center, our school partners, Partnership for Children, and daycares, and provide training for my team members about child abuse, what it looked like, how we are all mandatory reporters, and how we can all work together to improve the lives of children in Randolph County Department of Social Services. That was a quick and dirty, but if anybody has any specific questions about the report, I'm happy to answer.
So Tracy, does, does this include foster children, or are they under separate statistics?
So this includes foster youth.
It does include foster, children that are in a foster home.
It does, because they came into caring custody through child welfare, so yes, on the front end. We count them on the front end.
So some of our adopting parents may not be the best place for the kids, or we, we don't know that.
So parents who adopt have been thoroughly vetted. But the biological parents are the ones who are having the challenge with substance affected and being, having substances in their system when the child is born. Biological parents, not the foster parents.
And we still have issues finding enough adopting homes?
Of course. We have more than 200 children in foster care, and we probably have 30, 35 parents that are willing to foster. That's one of the things that has been such a challenge for us, is we have to place children outside of our own community. So we support other community with the funding that goes to those counties to raise children, because we don't have enough in our own community. So that's a longstanding problem, and one that we are always working to make better.
I think last month, there was some federal money that you could not get access to. Has that changed, or?
That was Water Assistance Program that we received some ARPA funds that we were having challenges with some of the vendors. Not all the vendors wanted to participate. So what it was is funding from ARPA, and citizens can use it who have cutoff notices for water or sewer, who have large bills, they can use it more than once, but not all of the vendors in our community are taking advantage of that. So we still have quite a bit of those funds still left. We had more than $200,000, and we probably used about $6,000 or $7,000 so far. We have until 2023 to spend it. So we're working real hard to get it spent.
So explain to me, when you say the vendors are not using it.
So we.
The money goes directly to the vendors?
Mm-hmm. City of Archdale is one of our vendors. If they have a citizen who is having a challenge meeting their bill for water or sewer, we can help them. But not all vendors have signed up, and we are advocating very strongly and reaching out to all of the vendors in Randolph County so that they can all take advantage of it, and so all our citizens will be helped, and all the bills will be paid.
Okay, so you feel like you're getting the messaging out to the vendors?
We're working really hard to get messaging out to vendors.
Okay.
What, what kind of budget or monies, I guess I should say, was received by your agency for that type of program?
So the low income water assistance was on the consent agenda last month, and that was around $230,000 odd thousand. This month, we had low income energy assistance that was almost $1 million, $900,000 and some thousand.
And that's Randolph County?
That's Randolph County, and we have spent approximately $279,000 of that $900,000 odd thousand so far. We only began spending that December 1.
And how do we identify these vendors?
So for low income energy assistance, though, that's, we haven't had any challenge reaching out to vendors. The low income water assistance is what we've had challenges with. We've been doing low income energy assistance for many years, Duke Energy, our own electricity bills. We have a longstanding system in order to support those citizens that need that. But the low income water assistance program is very, very new, and had some challenges in the very beginning. So vendors were hesitant to sign up. I do believe that the state has straightened out those challenges that they had earlier, and that's working much more smooth now.
Most of those vendors would be municipalities, I assume?
Yes.
So.
I guess all of them would be.
I'm sorry?
I mean, all of them are municipalities, right?
Yes. So I'm not trying to out anybody, because again, I'm working with them. So I don't want to say anybody's name in a negative light, but we are working with them, and the first part of that is education. They have to know exactly what it is and how to take advantage of the monies. And we do have some municipalities that have challenges with our check writing system. You know, when they, we make, we say we're going to pay a citizen's bill, they want the money quick. And as you know, the county doesn't work that quick. We have, you know, a system. So we're, we're working through some challenges.
So there's no real need for these municipalities not to be working with you?
I would agree with that statement.
You have the money to pay them.
We have the money to pay it, yes.
And this money, this money's budget, this is federal money?
It's completely federal money, no county funds, but it does go to assist our county citizens.
It's, I don't know that this is, I would imagine, do you have, you have a relationship with our hospital?
Yeah.
How's that going?
They are a valued partner. I talked about substance affected infants and how our health providers are the ones who have to identify those youth that are born substance affected. So they're, they're a valued partner.
So I'm assuming some of these worst cases were taken to the hospital?
So I can't identify the source of reporter.
No, I understand that.
But they're, they're a valued partner for us to help protect children in our community.
Any other questions? Good discussion.
If, if I might, I don't want to prolong this, but, but one thing that I personally have kind of been educated at is your relationship with the two school systems.
Excellent.
I guess more than two school systems, but how much you relate or rely, I guess is the right word, on your partnership with the school systems. Could you kind of brush that a little bit for us?
So the superintendents are very valued partners, they, along with their staff. Not just them, but our other human services partners and law enforcement partners and emergency services and public health. And all of you are our eyes and ears in the community. As you know, the few employees that we have at Department of Social Services, half of whom at one time or another are home with COVID on a rotating basis. You know, we can't do it alone, so all of our, it takes all of our community partners to help, to help us keep children safe. And we value those partnerships very much, value those eyes on the children in the community, value those phone calls in the middle of the night.
I noticed that in the report, it says that DSS met with the Randolph County and Ashburn City Schools, keeping them abreast of new policies and procedures. Has that been done with the charter school as well?
Great question. I don't want to answer wrong, so I don't, I want to give you a correct answer, so I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, if not, we need to do that. I mean, the children there, some are from Randolph County, some are from other counties, but at the same time, I mean, that partnership would be valuable.
Right, agreed. Thank you for your time and attention, everybody.
I think I do have to sit. It would, it would be good as a county if we got as upset and as concerned and fervent in our issues about what we just heard with our kids in this county. If we do some other issues, we might be a little better county which to live. That's all I'm going to say. All right, TDA. Amber?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dana. Madam Clerk, for turning that heat down a little bit. I am flushed. Thank you all for your time this evening. I come to you on behalf of the Randolph County Tourism Development Authority. Board of Directors with a brief overview of some of our key highlights, and I'm going to back us up to year 2020. We are about two years behind as well. I'll start with our economic impact numbers. In total, United States travel industry experienced a $1.1 trillion loss of economic activity. $500 billion were lost in visitor spending, and 6 million travel-supported jobs were lost. The damage from this pandemic on the travel industry was found to be 10 times worse than that of the 9/11 tragedy. In North Carolina, travel generated $19.96 billion in visitor spending annually, with visitors spending more than $54 million per day. But this spending marks a 32% decrease from the $29.22 billion spent in 2019. Direct tourism payroll decreased 24.5% to $6.4 billion. Each North Carolina household saves an average of $170 in state and local taxes as a direct result of the visitor spending within our state. Locally in Randolph County, our travel generated $104.3 million in visitor spending. That was a decrease of 35.5% from 2019. Revenues in 2020 totaled $5.7 million in state tax revenues and $3.7 million in local tax revenues. Randolph County supported 1,013 direct tourism jobs and more than $35 million in payroll income. The sales tax generated for travel throughout Randolph County attribute to a tax savings of $65.22 per county resident in 2020. And how we come up with our fund, our funding is occupancy tax revenues, as you all know. In 2020, occupancy tax revenues in Randolph County were reported at $636,761.81, a decrease of 44.25% from 2019. And these taxes were collected from our hotels, motels, bed and breakfast in, Airbnb properties, and structures on campgrounds in Randolph County. The average occupancy at these properties was reported at 43.9% in 2020, a decrease of 32.5% from 2019's 65.1%. Visitors paid an average daily rate on room rentals at our properties of $77.34. That was still a decrease of 14.1% from 2119's average, as our hotels were trying to get those visitors to stay. From the rate charged on each room, the revenues that Randolph County was able to collect was $34.18, a decrease of collections of 42%. The destination data that we were able to pull from 2020. Each year, we survey our tourism attractions in Randolph County to evaluate their visitation records. Of the 31 attractions surveyed, they reported approximately 507,685 visitors for the calendar year of 2020, a decrease of 61.59% from 2019. And we attribute that to the stay-at-home order, to gathering limitations, staffing issues, and product supply demands. The visitors that we did see came from the top five states of Ohio, North Carolina, Florida, South Carolina, and Virginia. And within our own state, we welcome visitors from Greensboro, Winston-Salem, High Point, Burlington, Piedmont Triad area, Raleigh-Durham Chapel Hill, the Triangle region, Charlotte-Gastonia-Concord, Asheville-Brevard, Fayetteville-Fort Bragg, and Wilmington-Southport areas. The reason we collect this data is so we know how to target those visitors, so we can ask them to come back and invite them. Further outreach that we have access to are our operations of the I-73, 74 visitor centers in Seagrove. We have 10 part-time employees that work six days a week. In 2020, they assisted 29,682 visitors on both the southbound and northbound locations. In 2019, they assisted 64,090 visitors. We closed the visitor centers in March of 2020 and reopened in May of 2020. That allowed our team to place safety measures, guidelines, and protocols in place for interactions with visitors from across the country. From these interactions, we were able to distribute key travel-related materials, a total of 39,926 pieces collectively of our official travel guide, the North Carolina State DOT map, and the North Carolina Travel Guide. Additional public relations and marketing efforts that we did in 2020, as the official destination marketing organization representing each municipality in Randolph County, we reinvest our visitor-paid occupancy tax dollars into tourism marketing, communications, and destination development to bring the highest return on those investments. In other words, we're trying to market to new and returning visitors. In 2020, we were fortunate enough to safely host five in-person media tours. And we hosted the very first virtual tour in North Carolina with statewide and national freelance writers. And these media tours, these media tours consist of digital influencers, social media bloggers, vloggers, magazine editors, and freelance writers. Many of these journalists were from those key markets that we already saw visitors coming from. From these media tours, we saw the following results. And keep in mind that we were competing with print, digital, airtime with very realistic COVID-breaking news. We had approximately $1.7 million, or, excuse me, $1.7 million print circulation, almost 62,000 social shares of media stories, eight television segments, 46 online story placements, eight e-blast newsletter placements, four print magazine stories, one podcast, and one IG TV interview, Instagram TV interview. We also found success in compiling our own consumer-focused newsletter from the heart of North Carolina, including details of fall and winter activities. And our organization's digital presence continued to grow with more utilization of our social media. If you recall, we cut our budget $400,000 in 2020, so we had to get creative. As multiple tourism entities went completely dark on social channels, we took the opportunity to focus on our partners by hosting virtual tours through Facebook Live in the spring of 2020. We called it the Saturday Chat and Chill Series, which was a weekly series allowing us to connect our tourism partners to visitors, residents, and media outlets during the stay-at-home order. We saw a 9% increase in followers on Facebook, a 28.5% increase of followers on Instagram, and a 7.9% increase of followers on Twitter. These marketing tools were key as we balanced quickly changing messages of safety protocols and proved to be affordable as we marketed on an extremely lean budget. Some final thoughts I have for you tonight. Our tourism message that we share is not defined by any of the numbers in these, in this report, but our marketing efforts are supported by each of our nine municipalities that possess unique attributes shining each day. Those tourism partners are the true workhorses and heroes that help us solidify our message with their commitment to hospitality in Randolph County, the heart of North Carolina. Their passion allows us to remain focused on being a family-friendly, affordable, strategically-located tourism destination in the heart of North Carolina. Thank you for your time tonight.
So how did you do last year?
Last year looks great. I cannot wait to come back in January of 23. We totally flipped the numbers.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out one thing from my district, which is the southern part of the county. I'm looking at key phrases, top 10, five or Seagrove.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Out of 10.
Yes, sir.
And you, you keep hearing me say, I'm telling you, that's the coming place. That's going to be the place in the future. And that's why we're doing what we're doing with the Capitol Alley down there.
I was very pleasantly surprised in my Potter friends that they were flexible during this time. We had potters get online and sell their wares. Some of them hadn't had email addresses before. But they jumped on and they realized what they needed to do to survive. And they did that. So they were great. They were superstars.
Amber, you will recognize, I know you got a...
Yes, my chairman, my chairman David Carnes here.
Yeah.
I have a board member Ross Holt present. Anyone else? I don't think so. Thank you all.
Chairman Allen, you got a solid number five there with Staley.
I'm just, I will work and see what that interest is there.
I'm with you.
Somebody may have got hung with a clicker there. Been me, I may go down there and try to...
I tell you what it is. It has to do with Chicago Bears.
Could be.
Correct, Mr. Chairman?
Could be. Could be. I've heard that over and over again.
Oh, yeah.
In fact, not too long ago, there was, you know, the Chicago Bears anniversary.
Yeah.
And that was, made some...
Made big news.
Yeah, around. So not just, not just in a couple, but numerous places. So interesting, interesting guy, Mr. Staley.
They didn't know, they didn't really know about that.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's...
Right.
It was just something that kind of slipped through history.
Yeah.
That's really, has a connection with... I never would have guessed that Julian and mine of the county has a connection with Chicago, Illinois.
Okay. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, Ross. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, our trails up there. Mary Joan?
Good evening. I'm glad to be with you all tonight. I've got some big trail news for you. Through the efforts of the Great Trail State Coalition of 33 trail organizations, the General Assembly, including our representative Allen McNeil, who's here tonight, and Pat Hurley, and our Senator Dave Craven, they appropriated $29.25 million for trails. And since the number of designated state trails, like the Deep River State Trail, has doubled in two years from six to 12, decided all the money was going to go to the designated state trails. As a result, the Deep River, the Deep River State Trail is 125 miles. It goes from Jamestown to Monclure, the Hall River, and makes up five counties, goes through five counties. But only Randolph County has a conceptual plan for 15-mile stretch and has trail on the ground, has wonderful roe fures that the Piedmont Legacy Trails has helped us with and the TDA. And so Randolph County is getting the $860,282 that is going to the Deep River State Trail. In addition, each state trail gets $50,000 for capacity building, which means to pay, you know, for the trail coordination and materials and that sort of thing. So that will be over a two-year period, $50,000. Now, to receive the funds, each state trail has to have a memorandum of agreement with a partner nonprofit organization. Well, Deep River State Trail doesn't have the friends of the Deep River State Trail. We don't. Back in 2007, the TDA requested that it be designated a state trail. It's one of the first state trails designated. It's the only one that's both a land trail and a water trail. So from the beginning, the three municipalities that were very active were Randallman, Franklinville, and Ramsour. And so until about 2015, when they were kind of struggling and the TDA saw that they needed some coordination, they put together a Deep River Trail Task Force, the TDA did, and paid for a conceptual plan so that there would be a plan for them to go by so the coordination could take place. And this was actually, the plan was adopted by this board. And the first project was funded. It was the engineering for the Sandy Creek Bridge, which connects Franklinville to Ramsour, which it will, which was the number-one priority in the conceptual plan. And then the county has worked in, starting in 2019, established a kind of a volunteer county trail coordinator to work with the communities because their main issue has been cash flow. All the grants that they get are reimbursement. So you got to put up the cash ahead of time, and then you have to ask for reimbursement. We've lost a couple of grants for that reason. So the county has stepped in and done that on two or three grants now. So in 2019, with the volunteer coordinator, we established a county trail advisory council, which had all eight municipalities, including the Deep River municipalities, the wellness program, Piedmont Land Conservancy and Piedmont Legacy Trails, the TDA, all the different trail groups that were related. And it's been meeting to work together to get more funding and to get more trails and so forth. So we basically hadn't had a nonprofit organization to partner with. So about a year ago, since we are a state trail, the Smith-Rainer, who is our state trail planner, said, "Hey, you all got to have, you need a partner nonprofit. And why not do Piedmont Land Conservancy?" Because they are the ones that came in and purchased Faith Rock, put a three-quarter mile trail on it. They've bought land for Randallman. They bought land for Ramsour. It was, you know, we're in that Piedmont Legacy Trail, the regional trail section. So PLC has stepped up and said that they would do that. So they're in the process of signing the memorandum of understanding, like all the other state trails. And that way, they'll be able to receive not only the $860,000, but also the $50,000 for capacity building. Now, their role will be to, you know, to get the money, distribute it, account for it, ask for reimbursement, and provide support. And so the, what they need is someone in an official capacity with the county to do the coordination for these Complete the Trail Fund projects. And since the county has been working with, I mean, for the last three years, we've been working with the municipalities via the volunteer trail coordinator position, it only makes sense to make that one a permanent, part-time position. And that way, the PLC can contract with the county to get these, to do the project coordination for these funds. It will also formalize the county's role of coordinating with the Deep River municipalities. It will also give the county more control over what you've already invested and what you intend to invest with the ARP funds that were going to go to the Deep River. So the idea would be to establish an official county trail coordinating coordinator position. Now, what this position would do is that piece that is coming with this money, and that is working with a steering committee, which will include all the five counties that are on the Deep River State Trail corridor, and working with PLC on the, in state trails and that sort of thing. So they'll be doing all the things for the Deep River State Trail municipalities, which also includes some grants they already have right now. Also, Ramsour just received with some funding that Representative McNeil was able to get, some matching funds, has a Parks and Recreation Trail Fund grant to extend their trail. So there are a lot of things going on there. But that will be one part of the job. The other job, part of the job will continue to work with the county trail advisory council and all the eight municipalities on their trails, on their greenways, to make sure those things happen. And with the Uwari Trailblazers because that's a national recreation trail. So it will still continue to do those things and work with healthy communities and Piedmont, the Two Land Trust about land equities. All that will continue. But the thing that will be added is this specific job of coordinating the Complete the Trail Fund monies. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate that. I know it's late.
What's the timeline for actually receiving the money and the start of this?
Well, that's a very good question. And that's what they're trying to go through. State, when I say "they," is the North Carolina State Parks and Recreation. They are, we're meeting, as a matter of fact, on Thursday. All 12 state trails will meet, and they're going to go through what the process is. Then later in the month, PLC and IRB meeting with state trail planner to go over what, how to get the money, what the money can be used for and so forth. We've already proposed a project, and it is to do Franklinville to Cedar Falls. That last track of land has been acquired. There's a bridge over Bush Creek and so forth. It is beautiful. I walked the property with Mac Watley, and it is very, very nice. And the trailhead's going to be, we're working with Supona, but the trailhead there, they already have a paved parking lot. And then it will go to Cedar Falls to where the new North Carolina Textile Museum's going to be. So we're going to have a trailhead at the North Carolina Textile Museum and probably have a water access. We're talking about doing water access there at Laughlin Pond Road. So it's very exciting. There are all these things going on. But we're going to be seeing them this month. So we hope to have the money, I hope to have the money in April or, you know, but we're already doing the work right now.
That's, that's the money going towards the trails, but is that also the $20,000 to come to the county?
Yes, yes.
That same timeline?
It's the same timeline. We're going to figure that out. I mean, and our meeting is on the 23rd, so we'll be working out specifically what we're going to be doing. And we're also going to have a meeting of the expanded steering committee next Friday so that we have everybody on board. So we're already getting the work done even before, you know, they actually get the money. But you know how the state is. It's going to take a while for them to figure out how to, you know...
Close your ears, Allen.
Well, he knows it. We're always complaining to him. But it takes a while for them to figure it out. But they are working on this very, very, I mean, diligently. And so...
Any comments, questions?
Okay, so for clarification, the $40,000 over two years from the state is to be used for capacity building. Capacity building, so that will pay that salary for the part-time position for two years.
Right.
And...
Well, if we had had time, I would show you what the... There's a really nice, like, five slides put together on what project we're going to have and how we're going to use the capacity building. And what that is, is that $20,000, it's basically $25,000 for two years. So $20,000 would go for the trail coordination. And then the $5,000 would go partly for mapping because we don't have any mapping capabilities right now. And the other part would go for administrative support that Piedmont Land Conservancy would be providing. So, right, $20,000 for the trail coordinator position for two years.
Say that again?
$20,000, the Piedmont Land Conservancy would be contracting with the county to give...
But you said over two years.
For two years. $20,000 each year.
That's my point.
For two years. Sorry. I didn't mean to confuse you. No. And we're actually asking the, the trail committee of the Great Trail State Coalition is going to ask the legislature to provide that for another two years after that. But we want to get over this first. We're going to show them how valuable that time will be. Because all these organizations, some of them are very small, and they just got organized, and they were just designated. Others have full-time executive directors.
All right, other questions?
No, I just think it's important for citizens to understand that Ms. Pugh has been working as our trail coordinator, as she said, since 2019 for nothing. It's been completely voluntary. But we reached this point where we cannot access these funds unless we have, we either have a nonprofit organization who's in charge of this, or we, as a county, have a paid trail coordinator. So we can use this money to establish this part-time position with no benefits for two years. And then, at that point in time, then we can, you know, take that on or, you know, whatever the Board of Commissioners decides to do at that point in time. But by that point in time, two years from now, we will have had a trail coordinator, in essence, working for Randolph County part-time for five years for nothing. So I think that's pretty good. It will not have cost us anything because this two years that's coming up will be courtesy of the state. So...
And PLC did not want to go out and just hire somebody on, you know, they would prefer the county do that, you know, rather than... They don't want to do that. They would rather, you know, the county...
Sure.
And the county's been, has a large role in coordinating already. So it just made sense. My name is Ms. Pugh.
Other questions? I have a motion.
Oh, I'd like to make that motion. I make the motion to accept $20,000 per year for two years from the Piedmont Land Conservancy to fund a part-time, temporary, non-benefited trails coordinator position.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion, questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Thank you, Mary Joan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Let us know when the check's in the mail.
Okay, I will.
Okay, have a public hearing now, Craftsman Expansion Project. Kevin Franklin.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity of being here again. It's been a little while since we've done a building reuse grant, so I'm happy to be back in front of you asking for authorization for submission of one of these grant applications once again. This evening, we're here to talk about Craftsman Inc., better known as Craftsman Trailers, located in Ramsour. Also, just want to acknowledge that Paul Kaufman is here as well. He's the president and founder of Craftsman Trailers. Happy to have him with us as well. So Craftsman was established in Ramsour in the year 2000. Currently employs 66 full-time personnel between its manufacturing plants in Ramsour. And more recently, they opened up a facility in Albemarle Stanley County. Craftsman, a manufacturer and direct retailer of open trailers from single-axle utility trailers to flatbed equipment trailers to three-axle heavy equipment trailers and several other types in between those sizes and hauling capabilities. Craftsman plans to expand its Ramsour plant, which is located at 10051 US Highway 64 East. And the plan is to double the area housing its trailer painting and paint preparation area along with associated capital upgrades. This expansion will allow the plant to produce more total trailers since the welding and fabrication production capabilities currently exceed its painting capacity. The company will increase or create a minimum of 20 new full-time jobs across the company. That's both in Ramsour and Albemarle. The company does anticipate that at least 14 of those 20 will be created at the Ramsour facility. And just as a side note to this, Paul and I were talking earlier today, and he's been through this process with building reuse grant one other time at the Albemarle facility. At that point, they committed to 20 new jobs. And here they are, a few years later, with 40 new jobs. So he does anticipate that these numbers here are conservative and that over time, maybe not within the two years of the grant period, but over time, we'll see more than 20 new jobs and certainly more than just the 14 in Ramsour. The average annual wage of the positions associated with this expansion is $45,000. thousand dollars, exceeding the current Randolph County private sector annual average wage of forty thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars. As I've mentioned, Craftsman is eligible for a building reuse grant, uh, from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. This one, the amount of one hundred forty thousand dollars to assist with the expansion expenses. It's a Ramsor address, but they're outside of the municipality of Ramsor, so that would make the county, uh, the applicant for this particular grant. As you know, this grant no longer requires the five percent match that we've had in the past, uh, so no local government cash match is required for this one. Uh, the targeted submission deadline for this grant application is February the twenty-fourth, and assuming we do everything right, dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's, hopefully we'll receive a positive grant award announcement on April the twenty-first. The EDC does believe that this expansion project at Craftsman is a very good economic development project for the county. It'll increase the value of the building, result in the creation of twenty new jobs across the company, again, about fourteen of those at least here in Randolph County. Uh, we really love seeing our existing industry grow. Uh, this building reuse grant is, um, really a great opportunity for the county to accept state dollars to invest in one of our local companies, and, um, so we're, we're excited about, anytime we can get state, state dollars here in Randolph County, we're excited about that as well. So the EDC does request the board approve a resolution this evening authorizing submission of a building reuse grant application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, I will just note, uh, again, since it's been a few months since we've been through one of these particular grants, um, it does require that a unit of local government serve as the applicant, uh, requires a dollar-for-dollar match by the company, and it's structured as a forgivable loan administered by the county. And in this case, it would, as you know, if there's a problem, there is some risk to the county. And so in this case, um, Craftsman is willing to offset that risk through a deed of trust or similar financial instrument, or they're also contemplating whether it would be better for them as a company just to forego any payments until the entire grant period is, um, expired, and we can just settle up at the end of that period. So we'll be working with Paul and his team to determine which route they would like to go on that. But with that, I will, um, entertain any questions, if there are any.
This resolution says up to one hundred and forty thousand, but we think the actual numbers is one hundred and forty thousand?
The proposal that we received from the state for the project is one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
All right. Okay, um, we will open a public hearing. You've heard the presentation that issued before us, a building reuse grant, uh, for Kaufman Trailers. So is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to this request? Paul?
Chairman Frye and Board of Commissioners, I'm Paul Kaufman, the owner of Craftsman. Um, I would like to speak in favor of the request. Um, I think we've got a good track record of what we did in Stanley County. Um, we committed to create twenty jobs, and we've created forty down there. Um, if you drive by our place, you'll see that there's a lot of unpainted trailers sitting outside. We're having a very hard time keeping up, um, with our welding capacity, with the painting capacity. So this will give us an opportunity to, uh, do a much-needed upgrade to our painting facility, uh, add some more room. Actually, part of that would be a, a dedicated paint booth in the room to, um, with a couple of lines that will help us to keep up with our production capacity and create some new jobs in the process of doing that. I would be glad to answer, answer any questions if I can, if you have any.
If I have any questions?
I've got one easy one for you. Where's it located in Albemarle?
It, um-
We don't care about that.
If you're gonna buy one next, invite here.
We would like to have those forty jobs in Randolph County, actually.
It's actually in the old Palm Harbor Homes plant behind, um, Lowe's and, and the Ford Place on twenty-four twenty-seven, one block behind that.
I know exactly where it is, yep.
Yeah, good. All right.
I'd just like to say, I hear it's a great product.
Thank you.
I'll see the name around.
See it around.
Get it out.
We've been there twenty-two years now, and, uh, we're not going anywhere, so-
Been a good business force, Paul.
If I might, I was on the planning board when you first asked permission to be there.
That's, that's true, and Chairman Fry was on the Commissioners then, so we went, and when the first, we tried to get that first approved.
Great to have you.
Thank you.
Backbone of our county. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else here tonight who wishes to speak for or against this request? Okay, hearing done, uh, we'll close the public hearing and, um, go back to the board for, um, your, your wishes.
Mr. Chairman, since that's in my neck of the woods, and I am a, uh, I don't think there's a conflict of interest, but I do own two of his trailers. Well, one, 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 I bought two from there, so, uh, and they do have good products, and it sounds like it's a good project. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the county, uh, to apply for a building reuse grant for the Craftsman, Inc. Economic Development Project.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All right, further discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's approved, and thank you, Paul, and, uh, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, um, next item is our, um, budget meeting schedule. Does anybody have a conflict that you know of right now? Uh, looks like we've totally followed our usual, um, schedule, we've been having for the last several years, uh, Mondays and Thursdays, uh, actually only, well, a Tuesday, three Mondays, uh, through the month, well, actually, first meeting is in May the thirty-first, which is a Tuesday, and, uh, through Monday, June the twentieth. So I have a motion to adopt the schedule.
Sub move.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And it is adopted. So hang on to that, get it on your calendars. Hal, do you have anything?
A reminder, we meet Thursday, February the tenth, with Ashboro City Schools at McCary School, and on February the twenty-fourth, we have our annual planning retreat.
Anybody else think you wanted to say from our board meeting, David?
Uh, the North Carolina County Commissioners Association Board met, uh, a week ago, Friday and Saturday. Chairman Fry and I represented Randolph County, um, had a lot of good information, um, some additional ARPA, um, updates, um, just a, a good meeting, and, uh, I think Commissioner Haywood had her task force that met here in, in, uh, Randolph County last Wednesday.
Wednesday? Yes. We had the opportunity to offer our county, if we wanted to have the task force meeting somewhere besides Raleigh, and so, uh, offered to have us meet in Randolph County. They took us up on it, and, uh, proudly had them here, and they were, it's about developing a communications plan to be used in a crisis, and educating commissioners about their part in that, so that we can be effective communicators during that time, and thus assist our, uh, emergency management by taking, you know, a little bit of that off of them. But, um, there are, were people, some of those county commissioners came from a background in emergency management, and they were most impressed with our, um, Emergency Management Center. So, um, it was an opportunity to show them that facility that opened in late two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen-
September.
September. Um, Stan, my husband, was on the Board of Commissioners that, um, voted for that and helped to get it in, and they were just impressed, not, not, I mean, with the facility, but with the thought that had gone into the planning and the backup systems that were in place, and, um, they had compliments for our leadership, because they had met them through working with them on some other disasters, and so, um, it was with a great deal of pride that, that, uh, had them in Randolph County, and so, it was an opportunity for us.
I would add to that, I think it was Hurricane Michael about three years ago, at our, um, nine-one-one call center here in Ashboro, we dispatched for Beaufort County on the North Carolina Coast for an entire month. We dispatched all their ambulance and fire from our EMS, uh, building right here, uh, out of, uh, Beaufort County down on the coast. And Ed Booth, who is a commissioner in Beaufort County, came up and toured our facility, and he, he's one of our, uh, best, uh, braggers. He tells everybody about Randolph County and, and our nine-one-one call center, but it was great to have them, they were shut down, they had four or five foot water in their building down there, and, uh, we had the same software, and we dispatched for them, so that's a little, uh, interesting comment that, uh, that you know what kind of facility we have here.
And it may be old and short, but I told Commissioner Randy Thompson that if he kept trying to recruit our workers to come to emergency management at the coast, I would break his legs.
All right, anything else? Thank all of you for being here tonight, your participation. For those of you that are watching on YouTube and Facebook, thank you. Please be safe tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
Thank you, we are adjourned.